Not name the speakers. One, two, one, two. Yeah, microphone. One, two. One, two, one, two. One, two, one, two, one, two. One, two, one, two. One, two, one, two. Switch them. Ladies and gentlemen, good evening and welcome to this, the fifth in our series of town hall meetings labelled Conversations with the People. Conversations with the People provides an opportunity for the Nevis Island administration to come out into the various communities and to interact with you, the general public. It also provides an opportunity for the general public to come and mingle with the Nevis Island administration, to bring your questions, bring your comments or anything that you would wish to share with the government and with the general public as a whole. Of course, as is our tradition, when we start any of these town hall meetings, we start with a word of prayer. Can we kindly stand as we ask Minister Brand to lead us in a word of prayer?
We thank you for this opportunity to gather here in the Hanleys Road area, this conversation with the people. We pray, God, that we will have an interactive session tonight where the various ministers would have come to give an update on their stewardship, in particular, for this area. We also, God, are looking forward to the many questions that we are anticipating and that we hope that we will have the necessary answers for the various questions. Take charge, O God, of tonight's meeting. And let tonight be a meeting of information and facts. And let everything that we seek to do here tonight be done in order and in decency. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, I want to thank all of you who have come out this evening, those of you who are here in person, those who are following us via NTV, on Facebook and on YouTube. We want to welcome all of you. Let me at the outset start by giving an apology for the absence of the Honourable Premier. He could not be with us tonight. He has some family business that he's taking care of. Nonetheless, all of the other members and ministers of the Nevis Island administration are present and we will certainly give our presentations and give a good account in the absence of the Premier tonight. Very happy to be here in the Gingerland area. Gingerland is where I was raised and in the Hanleys Road area. I'm a duo by my mother's side and I was told that all of the duos are from the Hanleys Road area. So Hanleys Road is home to me also. So I'm very happy to be here this evening with all of my colleagues and of course with the area representative for Gingerland. We are here to interact with you, the people of Gingerland, and to give you an opportunity to question us, to give suggestions, anything else that you feel that is in order to ask or to say to us. I, of course, am responsible for the Ministry of Education, Information Technology and Library Services, and I will give a brief snippet into some of what has been happening in education over the past few months, and then it would be up to colleague ministers to bring you some information on the various ministries that they each run. While ministers, we communicate very often, we interact very often, the ministries are broad and each minister would have a lot more detail and a lot more information about their particular ministries than, say, another minister could possibly answer. Last night, I spent two hours on the On the Mark show, a good show that brings information to the general public, and I was accompanied by the permanent secretary in the Ministry of Education and also the principal education officer in the same ministry, and we had a very good discourse, giving information to the public about some of the things that we are doing in preparation for the new school year 2020-2021, and we were there to answer some of the questions that have been coming in from the general public. The general public have been flooding colleague ministers with quite a bit of questions. There's a bit of anxiety, and that could be expected, about the reopening of schools. And I'd like to say at the outset that it is the intention of the Ministry of Education, both here on Nevis and over on the sister island of St Kitts, to reopen schools on September 7th, and that means reopening for in-class teaching, in-person teaching. Of course, all of the schools have different situations, so we are dealing with the schools each by their own individual situations, all depending on the size of the schools and the populations of the schools. So we've gotten questions such as, how do we social distance the students within the schools? And so there's no one answer to the question because there are several schools here on Nevis and then several schools over on the island of St Kitts, and we deal with each school individually, all depends on the size of the classrooms in the schools and the number of students that are going to be in each classrooms. Luckily for us here on Nevis, I guess we've been practising keeping a good number of students in the classrooms for some years now, and more so in the primary school. The area where we would have a little difficulty would be in some of our high school classes. And I think that there is a shift system that is being worked out to deal with the classrooms that would be, that would have more students than we want to accommodate in a room at any one time. And so, as I said, it's been done sort of on an individual basis and a class-by-class basis, based on the space in the particular classroom and the number of students that we expect to accommodate. So there's a comprehensive plan that is being worked on, is being worked on by the staff of the Ministry of Education, along with the leadership at the various schools, and I'm pretty confident that what I've seen so far, that we are going to be very, very prepared come September. One of the other things that we have put into place is a strict cleaning and sanitizing regime. We got several cleaning companies and they are currently being deployed to the schools, and what they're doing is doing a general cleaning, this includes steam cleaning and pressure washing and so on. We want to ensure that come September morning, our schools are really, really sanitized. We got a lot of complaints about restroom facilities and so on, and we are certainly working diligently to have the restrooms that are not in the best of conditions brought up to standard. So these are some of the things that are happening behind the scenes to ensure that come September, the 7th of September, that we are in the best position to open. There's also the need, of course, for additional furniture and so on, and those needs are being worked on also. So in terms of where we are in education, I'm very confident that in September we'll be in a good position to reopen. I think that has been the main question that we have been getting throughout the summer. I think I got a question last night, so I can address it, about why not, why don't we reopen school a bit earlier since school had been off since March? And the answer that I gave to the question last night was that school went off physically in late March and we never really came back to classes physically, but a lot had happened since then. We did the FlowLearn and then we did the Microsoft Teams. In order to implement Microsoft Teams and so on, teachers had to be engaged in various training sessions and so on. So the teachers had been doing a lot, and it was a big adjustment for the teachers to get into the Microsoft Teams. We have some teachers who are not technology natives, so we had to sort of usher them into using technology. And so it was difficult for the teachers. So the decision was made to allow the teachers to have their summer break, even though some teachers don't really get a summer break because they come back early anyway. So we wanted them to have at least some opportunity to refresh because come September morning, there is a lot of work to be made up in some of the classes. So those were the reasons for not coming back two or three weeks earlier with the new school year. I'm going to stop there in terms of education because I know that we, all of the ministers, have quite a lot that they would want to impart, and I noticed that we have a full house tonight, so I'm expecting that we are going to have a robust discussion that is going to probably last for quite some time, and I'm very much looking forward to having this robust discussion. So let me move on to our next speaker for tonight, and I want to call on the Honourable Spencer Brand to give his presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr Chairman, Minister Troy Ulltand Lybert. A very pleasant good evening. All of you who are here with us this evening, I'm indeed delighted to be present here tonight. Let me also say good evening to all those who are listening via one video, the only powerhouse on the internet, and all those who are just via other online platform. Pleasure for me to be here tonight. I want to very briefly cover two areas that I'm responsible for, and I have the responsibility for communication, public water services, planning and environment, post. Tonight, I just want to spend a very brief moment on water and on food. I know that there is an unprecedented demand for food network, and I just wanted to give an update as some of the improvement that we have been making in St George's area. We would recall that 2015, 16, 17 would have seen the significant improvement of the main Hanleys Road carriage that would have significantly enhanced the area of Hanleys Road. But we have been also completing a number of side roads and also ensuring that we complete some of the areas that needed to be completed. Just recently, we would have completed an area at the bottom of Hanleys Road, you would know, in the area of Gargo. That is an area that we would have recently completed. That was an area that was not completed at that time, but we were able to complete it a few months ago. We also recently completed, that's another short area there, in the Hanleys Estate area, where we have, I believe, a number of elderly folks that were in desperate need to have that stretch of road completed. We also completed, in the Zion Webbs Ground area, some stone wall work that was left over from the 2007-2008 Island Main Road project. And I believe that, I believe that that was a task that needed to be done because it left a closed number of property along the Island Main at the top of Zion Village. We also would have completed, next to the church of prophecy, Golden Rock area, a project that we felt was absolutely necessary, it was a whole-stabilisation project. Now, where the Church of prophecy is located, at the access of Holy Rock, we would recognise that there were some unesqueated soil that would have collapsed any time. Ensure that we completed that project.
Thank you very much, Mr DJ, Mr Mixerman. We also embarked on a project in the Rollins area where we constructed an interpretation centre which was funded by UNDP and the Nevis Island Administration, and it so happened that this facility was first utilised in the recent election, it was used as a polling station in the Rollins area. Those of you who are from the, those of you who are from the Rollins area would also recognise that the Cuckoo Gut drainage was also of concern to the residents in that area. We would have gone in and did some drainage enhancement and slope stabilisation to protect a number of properties in that area. In Holground, we would have also completed some road enhancement and slope stabilisation as well. These are just some small projects that we would have done in the Gingerland area, and like I said before, I am aware that there are still a number of small projects that we still need to have completed, and we are hoping that we can get to those projects in very short order, once the necessary finances are available. I want to switch very quickly to water, and we also embarked on a number of water enhancement projects in the Webbs Ground area where we would have installed some 4,000 feet of four-inch HDPE pipe in Webbs Ground, better known as Harris's. And this project is, in my mind, is a very wonderful project for the NIA. I remember when my colleague minister, Minister Eric Evelyn and I campaigned in 2017 and in 2016. There was an elderly lady there who have lived there all her life, and in our conversation with her, we recognised that there was not any public water in that area, and we gave her a commitment that, once we were elected to government, we will ensure that we undertook that project to bring water to the Harris's area. And I'm extremely happy that we have done so, and to date, we would have completed some 4,000 feet of four-inch HDPE pipe, and we would have pressurised some 3,300 feet of that HDPE pipe. Also, in the Cleagot area, we started an enhancement project in that area as well, and this project was of some 1,400 feet of four-inch PVC pipe. This project would have started in late December, in late November, sorry, and we took a break in December and completed the project in February of this year. Now, this was a very important project as well because we were able to remove the inch-and-a-half PVC pipe that was in that area that were constantly breaking and creating disruption for the water supply in that area. So we were able to remove that inch-and-a-half PVC pipe and replace it with a four-inch PVC pipe. It also allows the Nevis Water Department to have a transmission line from the Cleagot area over to Horatio Heights. And if you would recognise that in the Horatio Height, there has always been some difficulty in having a government supply in that particular area. The additional work as it regards to the Horatio Height project started on the 3rd of August this year. Some 2,400 feet of four-inch HDPE pipe has been laid, and this also is, in a sense, to ensure that we have water transmission for the residents of Horatio Heights. This line would also come in very handy when we construct the proposed 3,000 gallon storage tank at Pond Hill. And if you recognise at the moment, there are times when we have some water shortages in the Charlstone area, in the lower areas, and it means that we have to move water all the way from Gingerland, all the way from Webbs Ground, and that water actually goes all the way down in Bad Village in Cherry Garden. The aim is to construct that 300,000 gallon water tank at Pond Hill, and once that 300,000 gallon water tank is constructed at Pond Hill, then it would mean that we will not have to move the volume of water from all the way in Webbs Ground, from all the way in Gingerland to feed Cherry Garden, to feed Bad Village. And we are hoping that we can have that tank along with some additional drilling in the Gingerland area that will take care of that particular issue. As I said, I just wanted to give a brief update on those two areas, some roadwork and some water enhancement project, in particular in the Gingerland area, to give an idea as to what we have been doing as it regards to water and also what we have been doing in ensuring that we completed a number of upgrades as to some of the secondary or minor roads in this particular area. Thank you, and I will stop there at this moment.
I thank you, Minister Brand, for your presentation. Indeed, there are lots of things happening in the Ministry of Communications and Works. Some of these things I did not even know were happening, so the town hall is to my benefit also. I noticed that we have filled up quite a bit. I see Minister Evelyn has gone to get a few more cheers, and so that's a wonderful thing. I'm happy to see so many people have turned up here in person. We're moving right along, and I want to call on Madame Minister Hazel Brandy Williams to make her presentation.
A pleasant good evening to everyone, and I want to say good evening also to those who are listening via VO and radio and on the web, internet or any other social media. We come to you again in our series of conversations, and I just want to give you a snippet of my stewardship in the Ministry of Health and Gender Affairs. I want to start by saying some general thank you. The Good Book says, "To whom much is given, much is expected", and so during this very difficult time, we have been receiving quite generously some gifts from a number of stakeholders, and so I want to say publicly tonight, to thank publicly tonight, those persons who have been assisting us. And so I want to say a public thank you to Mrs Janet Maynard, Sister of the Soil. She has an organisation called Circle of Kia. She's a sister to Mr Skeet of Sea Hustler, and she would have sent us just recently a container of supplies, hand sanitizers, disinfectant, a number of goods that we can use at Alexandra Hospital and at the seniors' home. This is not the first time she has partnered with us, and that is why I want to go publicly and say to her and her organisation how grateful we are for the gifts that she has been sending over the years. I also want to say thank you to a Mr, Daniel, I think the wife is Miss Coverley, and the gentleman is Daniel, it's a couple from Fountain though. In our meeting at Franklin Brown, I threw out a pitch for donations to the city scan that we are hoping to purchase, and they willingly made a donation towards that fund to the Ministry of Health, and so I want to say thank you to them again. And in wrapping up our series, it would miss of me if I were to end without saying thank you once again to our nurses who continue to give dedicated service at Alexandra, especially in this unprecedented time of the Covid pandemic. And two months ago, the Cabinet of the Nevis Island Administration would have approved the regularisation of their salaries, and I am happy to report that it will be reflected in the And I am happy to report that it will be reflected in their salaries come this month. We have completed all that we needed to do at the Ministry of Health, and we have sent on the necessary documentation to Finance and H R. So our nurses would be smiling, but we are not too jealous then because they have worked hard in this very difficult time. Under the Ministry of Health, it is a very large ministry. And so tonight I speak of port, port health. Our borders are still closed, but we still receive on a weekly basis containers from Tropical or any of those big chains who continue to bring our food. However, there are protocols for receiving these containers. And so the Port Health Department or Division continues to, to, to look and to work along with the, the agents. What happens in a situation like this is that the captains of these vessels would send in their, their manifesto, the information ahead of time as to the number of crew persons on board, the, the names of the ports which they would have stopped along the way, and whether or not anybody there is having any elevated temperature. This information is sent to maritime, maritime checks it, and then the boat is allowed to come to, to shore. They would offload the containers and the crew members, they have to stay on, on dock. They cannot venture off dock and into the various communities. The captain will then disembark first and bring this information. And then, once they are cleared, the other members of staff will be able to disembark and conduct their work. So I am saying that, to let you know that inasmuch as our borders are closed, we still entertain the large containers, but they too have to follow the Covid protocols that are in place. And as I am in Hanleys Road, and I'm indeed happy to be in Hanleys Road, having had my education in the Gingerland area, it is always a pleasure to be in this area. I continue to voice my concern in the illegal dumping that we see happening all around Nevis, and Hanleys Road is one such area. I'm appealing to the persons of Hanleys Road because I know in most cases, the perpetrators are not from the area. So I'm asking you to police your community as much as possible. When you see trucks coming down this side to dump illegally, you try and get as much information as possible, if you have to take the, a picture of the, the vehicle number or whatever you have to do. Do that and bring that information to the Department of Environmental Health. I'm saying that because it is your community, and who are the better watchmen or watchmen or watchwomen of your community but you? So I'm appealing to you to take charge, take hold of your community and ensure that no one no one dumped indiscriminately. Under the environmental health, and this comes under environmental health as well as the solid waste management. And so I started that discussion in the last conversation, and I'm ending it tonight because we would have had several complaints of persons dumping in this area of Hanleys Road. Ladies and gentlemen, we are in the hurricane season and the rainy season. And one of the, the, the after effects of the hurricane season is the proliferation of mosquitoes. And so I am asking persons at this time to ensure that their surroundings are clean, they remove all receptacles in their yards around their, their confines that could catch water. There are some antelots of land, I'm appealing to persons to clean up their lands. I know that some of the persons might be off island, but we have to clean up our surroundings or we are the ones who will be affected. So this is a clarion call and an appeal to persons to clean their yards. During this season, we would have initiated a, a bin service for free, and we would have put the, the large dumpsters in all the areas so that persons could use this time to clean up their yards, all the, the old fridges and stove and washing machine. We have given you a chance to remove those from your premises. And so I continue to appeal to everyone the importance of keeping your surroundings clean in this Covid era. It would be detrimental if we are to be battling Covid and still battling Dengue fever and all the other related illnesses that comes along with the, the infestation of, of mosquitoes. So please, I'm appealing to every one of you to do that. I'm also, I'm still on the, the matter of environmental health. We have seen a number of businesses close and are closing. And we have seen out of the closure, out of the Covid situation, we have seen a number of, of entrepreneurs applying their trade. And as such, we see a number of persons around town, around our vicinity, who are applying their trade in the culinary arts. Inasmuch as we want persons to maintain livelihoods, we also want persons to adhere to the necessary guidelines as it pertains to food safety, the preparation of food. And so a number of persons are preparing foods in their kitchens, in their backyards, and in all sorts of areas. We are appealing to you that you ought to keep your surroundings clean. Persons from the environmental health will be checking, and they are expecting you to adhere to the rules and regulations as it pertains to vending, especially preparing and selling foods. I'm appealing to those persons who do the grills on the side of the road. Protect your grills, clean them up, take them up where after you have used them, take them off of the road. I see too many persons leaving their grills there, and they come back the next week and they're using them again. We don't know what could happen when you would leave your grills all over the street for one whole week. So I'm appealing to you because you are serving the general public, and we would not want any unnecessary outbreak. As my grandmother would say, if we are to get any outbreak with Covid, it will be burial upon corpse. And we really don't want that to happen in Nevis. So I'm appealing to everyone. We want persons to continue to earn, we want persons to continue having livelihoods, but it must be done the right way. I now move on to gender, which is the next area that I am responsible for. In the, the Department of Gender, we have been doing a number of services. We are doing counselling to those persons who have issues. We are providing counselling. During this lockdown period, we have seen the number of mental cases escalated, persons are under deep stress, persons are anxious and very apprehensive as to what will be the outcome, especially if they would have lost their job. How do they look to the future with optimism? And so we have seen an increase in the number of mental health cases. We offer counselling to those persons who think that they need to talk it over with somebody. I know we are a people who are very private, but it comes a time when we have to share our, what we are going through with somebody else so that it can lessen our anxiety and make us feel a little better if we are to get some of the issues off of our chests. Persons could help, and they are genuine persons out there. At the, at our department, we pair you up with qualified, competent and professional persons who can deal with some of the issues that you are going through. We have completed just last week our first bootcamp for young entrepreneurs. When we started, it was advertised for women only, but as we put out the, the application, we realised that men applied also. And since we, the department is a gender department, men and women, we were able to allow some men to take part in the bootcamp. Last week, we had fourteen persons who would have graduated from that bootcamp with excellent ideas, and I'm hoping that their businesses will grow and would be sustained. The administration received funds from the Taiwanese government, I think it was five million dollars. These monies are now at S I D U, the Small Enterprise Development Unit. And so persons who have an idea, a novel idea of a business they would want to start, you can approach S I D U for funding. We have made it easier for persons by doing the, the bootcamp so that persons can get an idea as to how to run their business, how to market their business, how to sell themselves, and how to pitch their idea to maybe an investor or even to the bank from which they want to get the, the finances. So we have one group trained already. We have another tranche coming up in September, and then one final tranche before the end of the year. So when the open, the application period is open, it would be advertised on radio and on social media. So listen up and apply to be a part of that. Another, the last thing I'm going to say is that at the, the, the gender department, we want to know how persons are operating, we want to know how persons are fearing in this Covid. And so we are, as I speak, conducting a survey. It is called an economic assessment, a Covid economic assessment survey. And we are assessing the situation of men and women, how we are coping during this Covid situation. So when the, the persons come out to ask questions, please, please respond correctly, honestly, because information like this is what is going to help the government in terms of planning its programmes and projects, and we, it will have to channel the funds and resources that we get moving forward. So feel free to, to be a part of this survey. Ladies and gentlemen, I will leave time for questioning, and that is my report for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Minister. I think that was a wonderful presentation, certainly a lot of information for the general public. We're going to keep moving right along. The, you know, the time flies when you're having a really, really good session. It's already eight thirty. And I want to now invite to speak the representative for Gingerland, that means we are in his area, the Honourable Eric Evelyn.
Thank you very much, Minister Lyverd. And let me say good night to all who are gathered here. It is indeed a pleasure to specially welcome all of you to St George's and to welcome you to Hanleys Road. I want to say good night to my cabinet colleagues who are here. And let me say a special, special good night to all who have journeyed from Gingerland and all parts of Nevis to be here. I am overwhelmed with the turnout this evening, and I'm very, very delighted that so many of you have journeyed here to be a part of this conversation with us, the ministers in the Nevis Island Administration. This, of course, is our final in our series of town hall meetings. We would have started a few weeks ago, and we would have gone to all of the parishes. And it is often said that we leave the best for last. And so we are here in St George's Parish, and we have left the best for last. So thank you for coming. Now, as the Premier would have indicated some time back, there is no election that is close by, but we are with you nonetheless. We know that we are a caring administration, and that is why we have decided to come out and dialogue with the people of Nevis. Normally, when you hear about town hall meetings, an election is coming, no election is close, but we have decided that it is incumbent on us as a government to come and speak to you, to report to you what we are doing, and to hear from you in terms of what you think we are doing good and what we are not doing so well. So we are very, very happy to have you this evening. I am going to speak on a few things in my ministry. And just before I do so, I just want to take this time to extend some condolences to the family of the young man who died suddenly here in Hanleys Road last weekend, last Saturday, the late Clive Brown, who is actually my cousin as well. So I want to extend condolences to his mother in Puerto Rico, Muriel Brown, and his sister in Puerto Rico as well, Kimberly. We also have Clive, Budg, Kevin, we know as Budg, here from the Hanleys Road area, that's the brother. And of course, he comes from a very, very big family. And so I want to extend condolences to the entire family. And I want to say thanks as well to persons who would have extended their condolences to me as well. And I want to say a special thank you to the persons of Hanleys Road because Hanleys Road is a community that still has that community spirit. And the people of Hanleys Road, we normally rally with each other when things like these happen. And so I am delighted that we still have that community spirit, and the people have really been rallying with the family in this time of need, or in this time of sorrow. I want to move very quickly now and speak quickly about some of the areas in my ministry. I am responsible for the Ministry of the Department of Sports, and I want to just report quickly that the Department of Sports continues to collaborate with partners, continues to collaborate with other departments, and most recently, the department would have collaborated with Mr Keith Atterton and several other departments and private companies and organisations to establish the Livingston Sergeant Practice Cricket Facility at the E T W Park. Now, of course, we all know that cricket is a sport that we all could be very proud of. We, as a nation, as a country, in terms of per capita, I believe, would have put the most cricketers on the West Indies team. We have put seven cricketers on the West Indies team, and it is our aim to put more on the West Indies team. And I believe that this facility that has been set up at the E T W Park will go a very, very long way in assisting our young cricketers in upping their game. We have the raw talent in Nevis, but I think with the facility, the, I call it a first class facility that we have now, I believe that we'll be putting a lot more cricketers on the West Indies team. So I want to say kudos to my Department of Sports for collaborating with Keith Atterton as well as others in establishing this facility. Those of you who do not know the facility, I am inviting you to go and have a look, and I'm sure you'll be very impressed, as I was, when we had the commissioning of that facility on the second of August, twenty twenty. Now, in terms of culture, of course, we know that we are going through some unprecedented times with the Covid pandemic, but all of the departments are trying, we are trying our utmost to stay relevant in this time, and we have to be as innovative as possible, and we have to come up with initiatives to suit the times that we are living in. We are going through some new norms, and we have to do things to fit the new norms. Now, in June, on June the twenty fifth, twenty twenty, the Nevis Cultural Development Foundation, the N C D F, would have launched a programme called Black, Bringing Life and Culture. And it is a virtual, virtual programme that is trying to expose the culture and the talent of Nevisions and residents. Now, that first programme that we would have had, we would have had an endorsement by the Premier, as well as myself, as the Minister of Sport, I'm sorry, the Minister of Culture. The virtual event is taking place at N I P A. On that first event as well, we would have had a number of persons, religious artists, both locally and regionally, who would have performed during the first, the inaugural Black event. Now, that is taking place every Thursday night at seven thirty. So as we speak, there is an, a Black event that is taking place at N I P A. And during the past episodes, we would have had Black featuring our local DJs, our local soca, our local calypso artists, we would have featured our fashion designers. And so they are featuring every aspect of Nevision culture. And I must commend And I must commend the Nevis Cultural Development and Foundation for the initiative is being, it is being beamed all over the globe. And a number of persons have been viewing the episodes and we've been getting some very good reviews. Now, practically at all of our town hall meetings, I've been speaking about the Department of Social Services because that is a department that is under my purview as well. It is a department that has been extremely busy during the COVID pandemic, during the height of the pandemic here in Nevis, when we had the pandemic started, when many persons were home in the comfort of their home, in the comfort of their beds, in the comfort of their living room and bedrooms. Persons from the Department of Social Services were kept extremely busy because we are considered what we call an essential service and we had to be there attending to the needs of Nevisians, the less fortunate, the elderly. And so the Department of Social Services, we would have partnered with the police, we would have partnered with other departments in terms of ensuring that our people, our elderly, our less vulnerable, our less fortunate are well, were well taken care of. I must also say here at this point in time that the Department of Social Services, currently, we are having our program where we will be assisting parents in terms of back to school for students who will be needing uniform assistance. This is something that the Social Services do every year. It is not open for every student on the island. Of course, we do not have the resources for that. But we, for the persons who are less fortunate, who are not so well off financially, we try to assist you in terms of getting school uniforms for your children. And so if there's anyone who is listening or viewing and you fall in, you may fall in that category, you have to visit the offices. You can visit the office on Government Road, opposite Honkins, or the office, or the office on Park Range and lodge your interest in terms of being a part of this program. And we will see how we can accommodate you in terms of assisting you with uniforms for your children. Of course, they will do an interview and ensure that you fit the bill to get the assistance for the uniform. And of course, we continue to respond to the numerous, numerous calls and messages and visits for persons who need assistance with regards to food vouchers and food packages and so on. And so we continue to assist in that area. Now, in terms of youth, I am very proud to indicate that only last week, we had a very impressive award ceremony at the NEPA, the Nevis Performing Arts Centre, where six youth were awarded. That's called the Youth Impact Twelve Initiative, where we try to award or celebrate one youth per month in different areas. And so we had six very deserving young people who were awarded last week. And I will just recap who the six persons were for persons who may not have been aware of those persons. The persons were Melissa Clark for Sports Excellence, Brandon Powell for Information Technology, Verna Grant, Education and Lifelong Learning, Ravina Passad, Youth in Agriculture, Delcia Burke, Volunteerism, and Cecilia Cressy Stanley, Entrepreneurship with Specialty in Culinary Arts. Now, last week, Wednesday, was International Youth Day. And so the Department of Youth decided to have this special function to celebrate our young people on International Youth Day. It had a wonderful flavor of not only Nevisian, not locally, but we also had a regional and international flavor. Where we had a number of persons from the region and across the globe who were able to congratulate the awardees. They would have sent messages and those messages were played. You had the likes of people like Darren Ganga, Lance Whitaker from Sports. You had persons like Ina Harvey from the Inter-American Institute for Corporation and Agriculture, who were actually a part of that virtually. And I want to say a special commendation and congratulations to Miss Curtis Clark and her entire hardworking team at the Department of Youth for doing a marvelous job with that award ceremony. The awardees were beaming with pride and I was so very delighted for them. And they were very, very happy to receive the award. So once again, congratulations to the Department of Youth for that very wonderful initiative. I must say a word on the Department of Community Development. Of course, we know that the Department of Community Development, we are responsible for all of the community centers. And I am very, very, my heart is warm because the Department of Community Development has responded, has responded very timely to our town hall meetings. Now, we would have had, this is our final town hall meeting and we would have had four of them, including this one, at community centers. And the department would have risen to the challenge of making sure that the venues are very well-prepared. I must say kudos to Miss Maloney and her team. And especially for here tonight, I have to say kudos to Tracy and Molly and Londa, the young lady from Jessups, for decorating the hall and doing a marvelous job. Of course, we know this is COVID and they would have been doing some in-house training to ensure that their staff remain very well-trained. I must also indicate as well that the Department of Community Development will be running a, a training for fife playing. And if you're interested in learning to play the fife, you are asked to call the Department of Community Development. The sessions will be run in the St. George Parish and most likely at the David Freeman Centre of Excellence. And so I want to commend the Department of Community Development where that is concerned. I do not want to be very long because we have a packed audience and I'm sure these persons will be asking a lot of questions. Just, but before I wrap up, I just want to say, as the minister with responsibility for youth, that I want to just say a word to our young people across Nevis. We have been going through a period of calm on the island of Nevis, for which we are very, very thankful. Unfortunately, very recently, we would have had two incidents of gun violence in the Charleston area. And I'm appealing to our young people, please to kindly put down the guns. We've had several months without any gun violence and we do not want to go back there, where we were several months ago. And so I am making a special appeal to our young people to kindly put the guns down. Whatever you have, whatever problems, whatever issues you have, I'm sure you can solve them without the guns. Please, we want us to pick up love and put down the gun and put down the violence. And finally, as the Minister of Youth as well, I am a little bit concerned, and many persons on the island are a bit concerned as well, in terms of the consumption or the overconsumption of alcohol by many of our young people. We see it especially on weekends. There's nothing wrong with having some alcohol, but there's something wrong with overdoing and drinking too much. And so I'm appealing, I'm sure the Minister of Health will bear me out on that. It is not good for our health. And so I'm appealing to the young people as the Minister of Youth to try to cut back on the alcohol consumption. And one thing I wanted to add, I'm sure the Minister of Health would have forgotten to say that, but we are very proud that this administration continues to look after people and we have two brand-new ambulances. Last week, the Minister, the Senior Minister of Health, the premier would have mentioned it, but they are now at the hospital. I was there at the hospital recently and they are nicely parked in the hospital yard. So this administration continues to look after the health and well-being of our people. I would like to leave it there. I want to thank you for your patience.
Thank you very much, Minister Evelyn. Very, very sound words. I myself should have added something about that excessive consumption of alcohol. I think it's a, it's a problem and we definitely want to appeal to the young people to drink responsibly if you're going to drink. And certainly, if you're driving, don't drink and drive. We're moving right along and we have one more speaker for you this evening. And it's none other than the Deputy Premier, the Honourable Alexis Jeffers.
Thank you very much, Chair. And let me start by saying good night to everyone gathered here. I believe the apology was made earlier for the absence of the premier, the Honourable Mark Brantley. Of course, he is not here because of personal reasons and, and he, of course, would want us to convey his best wishes to everyone here. I also want to thank all of you for coming out this evening. This is an excellent gathering this evening. Many persons may have been frightened by that. But anyway, this is an excellent gathering this evening. And I know all of you or many of you could have spent your nights somewhere else, but you have chosen to come here and that we are very appreciative of. Because of course, we have been doing these town hall meetings for the last five weeks, thereabout, or we have had five meetings thus far. The persons who have attended, we have had some good crowds and some indifferent crowds, but tonight is one of the best and I want to commend the... One of the best or the best? And I want to commend the representative or the elected representative for this area, the Honourable Eric Evelyn, for making the effort to ensure he gets the word out to come and be a part of this. So he must be commended for that. Ladies and gentlemen, I am not going to be too long this evening because of course, all of my colleagues have certainly given you an in-depth look at their various ministries and departments. And I do believe that they must be commended for the information that they have imparted here this evening. But I, I want to start my discourse this evening by looking first of all at the hurricane season that is upon us. As the Minister of Disaster Management, I would want to say to you that this is the point in time, so to speak, when you, you want to not only be prepared but stay prepared and not only get ready but be ready for whatever the eventualities are. Because of course, we are just about twenty-one days before we get to the peak of the hurricane season, which is the tenth of September. And of course, another four months before the season is over. So it therefore means that we will be seeing many more weather systems that we'll have to deal with as we go along. Currently, there are two systems that we will have to keep an eye on over the next couple of days. We continue to pray though that these systems will avoid us or bypass us. And we do need the rain though, because our farmers are looking for some well-needed rain. But of course, the challenges that come along with these major systems are things that we don't want to deal with at this point in time. But I, I want you to stay tuned to all of the various media houses that normally would present us with updates on the weather system and patterns that we're dealing with so that you can be in a state where you can act accordingly and follow all of the guidelines and all of the information that is imparted so that you can be safe and take care of your family as well. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to say, as I speak quickly about the Honourable Mark Brantley before, I want to just say at this point in time how... I just want to commend him for his effort as the leader of the island of Nevis during these difficult times. Of course, we know the pandemic that we are facing. We are now in a hurricane season. There are challenges here on the island of Nevis in terms of closure of all of the hotels. Businesses are struggling under these particular pressures that we are facing. And of course, revenue collection is, is far lower than what it normally would be. Through all this, we have seen an effort on the part of the premier and the cabinet to ensure that we continue to provide various services to our people, providing the various training as well that the Minister of Health, Brandy Williams, would have spoken about. We continue to ensure that our citizens are kept safe and kept healthy through all of the difficult situations that we are encountering. And it, it boils on to leadership when it's all said and done. And that is why I'm mentioning it this evening, that the Honourable Mark Brantley has had to lead this island through a difficult period of time that we have never experienced before. Of course, we have experienced hurricanes before on the previous leadership and governments. We have experienced the closure of four seasons in the past. The other things such as the financial services, difficulties that we would have faced back in two thousand and eight, thereabout, two thousand and nine. But this one is so much different. And that is why the commendation has to go out to the leader and also the cabinet and also the, the people of Nevis who have demonstrated that they are, we are a resilient people. And we will continue to press on through these difficult times to ensure that we can find ourselves on the other side of these difficulties when that situation arises and become much stronger and much more resilient in our effort to survive here on the island of Nevis. But ladies and gentlemen, I just want to talk quickly or speak quickly about agriculture as I've done over the last couple of town hall meetings. And the reason why I continue to speak about agriculture, as the Minister of Agriculture, I am certainly impressed. And I am, I, I am hopeful that we continue to do some wonderful things here on the island of Nevis during this particular period of time to ensure that we can go back to some of those days when we were, quote unquote, the breadbasket of the region. And I say that because in the past, you, you know, we would have had many persons from not only here in Gingerland area, persons from Winwarda, persons from Jessups, Bansgat and those areas who would have done a significant amount of farming here on the island of Nevis. And have gone even across to St. Kitts to sell some of those produce. And I, I want to commend persons who have seen the importance of agriculture and have sought to place significant emphasis on backyard gardening, for example, and those established farmers who have sought to increase their production so that we can feed ourselves here on the island of Nevis. Of course, I have said before and I continue to say that we, in this part of the world, we are fortunate because we have some of the major resources that are needed to produce. We have water. The Minister Brand would have spoken about what he's doing in water. We have land, labor, of course. All of us can certainly do something in our backyard or even on a larger scale. So you have land, you have water, you have labor. Those are some of the major resources that are needed in agriculture. And if we all have to eat, it therefore means that it should not be a difficult task for us to go into our backyard and start some form of production. When it's all said and done, it is to your benefit. You know what you're planting, you know what you're producing, you know what you're eating. And it is a healthy thing to do in that there is some physical activity that is involved or physical effort that has to be exerted. So in terms of your physicality, you're improving that as well. But more than that, we from the Nevis Island Administration have been looking at ways and means where we can give our established farmers added incentives to do more or to grow more and produce more. Because we do believe that when we look at the amount of imports that we do on an annual basis, the data suggests to me and the data that we have seen suggests that it is well beyond one billion dollars of imports that we do annually in the Federation. We are seeking to put together the data for Nevis so that we can set targets with our farmers. And when I say set targets, set some targets so that our farmers would know individually what they are required to produce. And once they are able to produce at those levels individually and you have them put those numbers together collectively, then we can say we can make some significant dent in the importation of certain food products here on the island of Nevis. And I believe that's where the effort and the whole ethos is at this point in time. And that is to ramp up production of food and vegetables here on the island of Nevis. And I, I know we have the capacity to do so because the enthusiasm that I see when we have distribution of seeds and seedlings at the Department of Agriculture suggests to me that persons are definitely interested in conducting or undertaking some sort of farming. We also want to move much more, we want to move further along with... We also want to move much more, we want to move further along with the technology that we call greenhouse technology, that is greenhouse farming, that is protected agriculture. And I see in the audience one of our most vibrant greenhouse producers here on the island of Nevis, Mr Makitros. And I always mention Makie and he's a gingerlander and a farmer and one who have taken on a challenge because it's not an easy technology to undertake, but he has taken that on and he has made it a business and is, I wonder if I can say he's making money, he might, he may not want me to say that, but he's making money or else he wouldn't have continued in that vein. But I say that to say this, that to all our young men and young women out there who are not so much interested in the open field agriculture, greenhouse technology is the way to go. It is a prolific form of farming and it is that type of farming that can provide food throughout the year, twelve months of the year for that, for that matter. And we want to ensure that from the Department of Agriculture standpoint, that we are placing more resources into that technology so that our young people can come on board. Because as we get older, we understand that we cannot bend our backs as we used to or encounter some of the sun or the harsh realities of being out there in the sun. But that particular type of farming for sure is one that I do believe our young people can gravitate to and indeed it can certainly help us to meet some of the targets that we are hoping to accomplish beyond this year into next year. So that is an option available as a matter of fact, the Minister Brandy Williams would have spoken about SEDU and the five million dollars that we would have procured from the Republic of China, Taiwan. And that in itself is available or monies from that particular, from that particular fund is available to our young men who are thirty-five and younger or any female, it could be up to seventy years and beyond. If you think you are young at heart to undertake greenhouse production, you certainly can. So that is a form of business that one can bring a proposal to SEDU, that is the small development, small enterprise development unit, SEDU, yes, S E D U. So that is something that I believe our young people who qualify or, when I say qualify, who are within that age range, who are interested in that form of technology should certainly take on that as well. Because when it's all said and done, coming out of Covid nineteen, we should be able to point to certain accomplishments that we would have had during these times that would set the platform for us going into the future. So if indeed that persons are seeking to get into various forms of businesses, then this is the time to put your proposals and packages together so that at least when the time comes, because some may have some doubts as to whether we'll be out of this particular pandemic anytime soon, we can't be too worried about that per se. What we have to understand is that even if it's with us for the next two to three years, we still have to carry on with the business at hand and life would have to move on and we just have to adjust accordingly and do the necessary things that would help us to face the challenges as we go along. In terms of housing quickly, in the Rices area, we would have procured just about one point nine acres of land and we are hoping to build just about ten houses there in the, well, I don't want to give a timeframe as to say by the end of this year, but the preparation work will start shortly in terms of cleaning and clearing that particular plot of land. In terms of the specific area, I know Rices, but I cannot even tell you exactly where, but it is, is there a name there for that area, Eric? It is Rices, but it's below the last, the last house, somewhere over here in Rices. But once you see clearing being done, those of you who live here in Hanleys Road, Rices area, once you see clearing being done over the next couple of weeks, then you would know that is where those houses would be built. So I want to say to those who are listening and those who are here, to start the process in terms of applying for housing in that area, like I said, it will be just about ten houses, ten or twelve houses. When the subdivision is done, we'll know exactly how many, but based on the size of the plot of land, it will be about twelve houses in my opinion. So we want to provide that, that will be the first housing development in Rices or in Hanleys Road area. Persons here in Gingerland have been clamoring for housing. There was a housing development that was done up there at Hard Times, there is one down at New River, but it seems as though that when persons are born and raised in Hanleys Road, they don't want to move. But these twelve houses will be a start to good things to come in the future. Now, I want to just, as I said, I wouldn't be long this evening because we are seeking to have more of an interaction with you. I would not believe that we'll come here this evening and no one would have anything to ask, but I'm sure you have many questions to ask. So we have been advised to spend less time talking and more time listening and responding. With that being said, I want to thank you for listening and of course, we are at the head table, we are open for all questions this evening so that we can be much more informed in the end. Thank you very much for listening.
I thank you Deputy Premier. I want to thank all of our Ministers for their presentations and we have come to that time where the, the mic is now open, there's a mic in the middle of the hall and what we would want, if persons have questions, you can indicate by raising your hand and then once we acknowledge you, then you can step up to the mic and ask your question or make your comment. So the floor is now open for questions or comments. Who's gonna be first? We have a full house tonight.
Yeah, sorry to be late. Is that the mic? Oh, sorry. But you can hear me because this is a small, you all can hear? All right. I'm late, but I was listening most of it and reading actually. And this question is to the Minister of Agriculture, Mr Jeffers. Well, I have maybe both three questions, I'll throw three and then I'll say. Um, one, Covid has, Covid has taught us a lot of things and one of the things that it has put fishing in the forefront of food security, which it has always been, but it has now been recognized. And I hear the Minister talking about agriculture and his agriculture slash fishing, but fishing is never mentioned in the budget, in speeches and so forth and it's about time Covid again have its plus and the negatives, but it's a plus. It just taught us that fishing is important. One of the things is, we have about seven landing sites in Nevis, I don't know about St Kitz, and only two are government-owned. So the question is, Minister, is there any plan afoot to have these landing site government-owned so the fishers at least can have some sense of ownership and some sense of posterity on this site? Because we know in our little landing site in Indian Castle, there was a proposed hotel, I almost say hospital, for ten years now and nothing has become a bit. And so I want to know, one, where that is where the hotel stands and two, yes, if there's any plan afoot to have these sites become government-owned slash fishermen-owned? And thirdly, Minister of Sports, is there an overall plan for sport in Nevis? Because again, the health of the nation is the wealth of the nations and one of, one indicator of our health is through sportsmanship. So I want to know if there's an overall plan for sport in Nevis slash and for this ground because it has been completed about three years now. There was a cricketing pitch here and it was not replaced. So I want to know if there's an overall, if there's something afoot in sports and I guess if there's an overall plan, then this ground would factor into that plan. I'll hold for now.
Okay, well, I'll start first, Minister. Makie, I believe you and I go way back when it comes to fishing and what we have done to establish quite a number of things with fishing. But I will say to you that, of course, you said that we don't speak much about fishing and you don't hear it being spoken about in the budget and so forth, but I will say to you this evening that we have done quite a number of things to ensure that fishing and fishermen are taken care of here on the island of Nevis. Of course, you have your challenges from time to time when you have different weather systems come through, you lose your fish traps and so forth and we as a government has always been there to ensure that we give you at least some means by which you can get back to your trade, whether it's by way of a roll of wire or reduce prices on the equipment that are needed for you to go out and ply your trade. During this pandemic situation, you would be familiar and all of the fishermen here on the island of Nevis will be familiar with the packages that we have offered in terms of a free roll of wire and then half price to this, on the second roll of wire. Recently, we got some wires from St Kitz again and within a short period of time, they were all gone. So it therefore means that we have been doing, I will not say an excellent job, but we have been doing the best job we possibly can to support our fishermen here on the island of Nevis. In terms of the landing sites, as we go around the island, you know, you said that there are seven government-owned? Seven and two government-owned. If we were to look at the coastline of Nevis, for example, you understand where the challenge starts. For you to pull your boat up on any particular surface, you're looking for sand. And as you go around the island, Nevis has a coastline, yes, but there are limited areas where you can certainly say you can have a landing site. If you look at the western coastline of Nevis, starting down in Charlstown and coming up to as far as O'Allie, for example, and even beyond, even come up to Herbert Beach area, there are challenges along there in terms of what lands the government-owned because beachfront in those areas are very limited as well. You speak of here at Hanleys Road and the proposed plan for a hotel there, those plans are still afoot. We have had negotiations taking place for quite some time now and they're still ongoing. In terms of the alternate site that will be available to you, of course, that is being looked at as well, so I wouldn't want to say too much regarding that. But we certainly do bear a part in this and we do have an interest in the fishermen here on the island of Nevis. Of course, as the Minister, you may not hear me speak about the fishermen on a regular basis, but the persons and the personnel who are involved in the marine resource department here on the island of Nevis, Lemuel Pemberton, Clive Wilkinson, Yolann and all those guys, they do go out and collect the data, they go out and provide the support and of course we can always say from time to time, more can be done and more needs to be done and more will be done. But of course, it is all dependent on resources as we go along. But the fishermen are very important to us. Quickly though, let me just say there's an initiative that you'll hear about shortly, which we will announce from the federal level where we have done some negotiations with one of the major supermarket chains here in the Federation where they'll be taking, I believe, seven hundred pounds of potfish every week. That is a start, we don't know where it would go, if it would go up more, but at least seven hundred pounds of fish here in the Federation of St Kitz and Nevis. They have already set up the storage area for that, they have already set up all of the infrastructure to receive these fish. So we are hoping that our fishermen will buy into that as well to ensure that they're making some money. So there are things being done, there are initiatives being worked on and as we go along, we'll certainly divulge.
All right, thank you. Let me just respond to the question that was posed to me and just before I do so, I have also received some information that we lost someone else from Hanleys Road today who resided at the flamboyant home, so I just want to extend condolences to the family of Mervil Webb as well. So I just got that message a while ago, so I want to extend condolences to those family members. So those of us who are from Hanleys Road, we always hear, once we lose one, we're gonna lose another one, right? So that happens a lot. In terms of sport, thank you very much for the question, Mr Moore. Yes, the Department of Sports do have a plan that they operate by. Of course, at the beginning of every year, they will put together in terms of initiatives and programs what they will do for the ensuing year. And apart from that, actually, the both the St Kitz and Nevis, we are now working on a strategic five-year plan and as a matter of fact, that plan should be rolled out any time now. I know that I would have been in contact with the Permanent Secretary of the Ministry of Sports in St Kitz, we would have had some consultants here, would have come in early this year and part of last year, they would have done some work in St Kitz and Nevis with the departments in St Kitz and Nevis. And so very soon, we'll be rolling out a five-year strategic plan for sports. But in the meantime, the Department of Sports do have a plan that they work by on an annual basis. In terms of here at Hanleys Road, when I entered government, two years, two and a half years ago, I did indicate that I will be trying my utmost to ensure that all of the sporting grounds and facilities on Nevis are enhanced and that includes here. I know some work would have been done before I got into government. What we are trying to do now, we are limited in terms of what we can do because the entire ground is not fenced. What we have, we are trying to do, it should have been done last year, but it will be done this year, we're gonna be fencing the other part of the grounds and I think by the end of this week, we should be have some, we should have some gates that are put on in several areas so at least animals could not, cannot come in and persons will not be able to drive in as well. So that is a start and so hopefully by the ending of the year or next year, we should have the entire ground fenced, all of the gates on and that will continue in terms of the improvement of the ground. We will put the cricket pitch back, but as I said, we wanted to ensure that it is properly fenced and the gates are on.
Thank you for that. We have a gentleman over here on my left.
Good evening.
Evening.
Well, I have a few questions, but I'm gonna pick up on you and Makie started. Now, the landing sites, I am presently trying to acquire some money to get a slipway, to assist the boat owners when they pull up the boat. But I'm told that the piece of, the area we use in Charlstone, O'Barth, doesn't belong to the government, so therefore no funded agents are gonna give money to build anything there. So I would like to jump on the same point that government need to acquire. Actually, I tried to call Mr Minister, you have seven calls, yes, and you have yet to answer my call. Now, I'm only return my call, but come later, I don't know what.
Me?
No, 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 Mr Fishers. Next issue, now. Now, fishermen, I mean, you was as campaign issue, or you can make a little thing, but this little roll of wire, them think nine of, you need something more substantial. Fishermen need assistance, like in acquiring loan at more reasonable interest. No, no, you wanna go, you wanna on the free, you require one. And Mr Minister, no, I don't mean to count you, Mr Minister, the legislation, he have a fisheries advisory committee. I am wondering up to now, why haven't that been put in place? Now, you see, you said that you are doing, did negotiation with a supermarket to seven hundred tonne of fish, or one tonne of potfish, let me tell you, there not, you know, potfish to supply local market. So there no way you'll find seven hundred fish, seven hundred tonne of fish a week to supply the supermarket and this is the official advisory committee, okay? Because if a proper fisheries advisory committee place, if we have advise the government and issues pertaining to fishers. Now, fishers have Now, fishers have moved on to the pelagics. If you have seven thousand pounds of pelagic per week, you could get that, but not potfish. So I think it's time that the fisheries advisory committee is put in place so they could advise the government that anything pertaining to fishing, not government, you have Minister of Fishing, Fishing, what what? Where the fishing? You may go and boat pull to Pat, but they ain't say nothing about industry, you're busy doing other stuff. So I need people and when you're all making, doing this, the kind of negotiation, there are several organization. If you go reach out to the leaders for assistance in guiding you to make decision, that'll be useful. Anyway, move on. Mr. Libert. As the former Minister of Public Works, what did the Hanley's Road do? The main what the Hanley's Road? As the former Minister of, it was Public Works? What year did the main what the Hanley's Road do?
You know?
Huh?
I don't remember the year of hand, maybe twenty.
You don't remember the year of hand?
Fifteen or so.
But you remember that Public Works came into Box Hill and dig up Box Hill Road?
Into Box Hill? I don't recall.
Mr. Minister?
Ask, ask a question, my atta.
Well, it's over four years, I don't wanna, I don't wanna tell lies, sorry, let's say over four years. It's over four years Public Works came into Box Hill, the area that I live, that's the middle section. Dig up all road, which, which was built by the people inside of Box Hill. Public Works came and dig it up, say it was too high, so they tried to mesh it with the main road. And up to now, we've been pleading and begging, you know, when you're doing main, when anybody in here know when you're doing roads, you got a truck coming around waiting on the road because of us. Well, we in Box Hill, we ain't got a pleasure. So you got to deal with us every day for four years now. So, Mr. Minister, I've been calling you several time, I would like you please come and address that problem because it's a big one. Like me and Suzette who live close to it, we get the brunt of it. Every minute we hold is full of dust, full of dust, full of dust, full of dust, because not truck coming to wait down the road. So please, come and get it fixed. Thank you.
An intervention, atta. I apologize if you were trying to reach me and didn't get me, but tomorrow we can have a conversation. But quickly though, you spoke of the fact that we may not be able to meet these particular targets because fishermen are not taken seriously. I will say to you this evening that fishermen themselves have to take their trade seriously in that, in that. I listened, I listened, so give me a chance to respond to your input. Fishermen will have to take their trade seriously in the sense that we have persons who are part-time fishermen, that's the reality. If you're gonna go fishing and you go out and set some pots and just go on a Saturday to pull those pots, well, whatever you get, that is your catch for the week. If persons did decide that they're going into fishing as a trade, it therefore means that you have to get the proper equipment, upgrade from some of the smaller boats that you have, and I'm not talking about you, but generally speaking, but you have to upgrade to the point where you can go out and fish for a livelihood. Nice, you went to the microphone. But anyway, I was making the point, and my point, I believe, stands as it is, that we have to figure out as fishermen, are we gonna make this a business? Are we gonna be part-time fishermen? Because if you're gonna be a part-time fisherman, then the results will be there to reflect exactly what you're doing. But I have seen persons who have gone out, I go to Anguilla and those places and those guys go into deep waters and get hundreds of pounds of fish to bring back to shore. And they're able to supply fish to send Martin on a daily basis, for example, from Anguilla. I use that as an example because of the types of boats and the type of equipment that they use to go out and ply their trade. So around here, we have to figure out how we can get to that level in order to bring about the type of results that we're looking for. No, 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 no.
I think you made the point about the road in Box Hill, so we'll address that. And I think the current Public Works Minister would be in a position to address that.
No, one more, one.
Hold on, hold on, after, after.
The one I have spoken about that road, Box Hill, sometime. Went and visited the site. He was home at the time, yeah. We, at the time, had a schedule. Completed that, upgrade that. Thank you very much. The director, the PS and I would have gone to the site and look at it. And we recognize that a lot more work would be needed to be done because I think there is a issue with some drainage there, got. And we actually had it penciled in sometime last year to have it done. We never got to, to, to undertook the work. And I know that you have raised that matter with me a number of times, but we know that we have it to do and we can assure you, I can assure you that it will be done. I am not gonna sit here tonight and tell you we're gonna get to it next week. I would be lying. I would be lying. I am uncertain as to when we're gonna get to it. I'm gonna be honest with you. But what I can say to you that I am aware of, I know it's supposed to be done, I know it needs to be done, and you have the commitment that it will be done. But what I will say to you, I do not have a timeline that it will be done next week or in the next two weeks. I'm being honest. You also spoke about the landing site at Bath. And you are absolutely correct, the land is not necessarily owned by government. But one of your colleague fishermen raised that matter with me just a few weeks ago. And we recognize that it is of critical importance to the boating community on Nevis, not only the fishermen, a lot of guys who use that area to pull up their boat, especially in times like this in hurricane. And we are looking at an option of trying to see if we can do something there to make it a lot more easier for the guys to pull up their boat. So I'm aware of it and we have had some discussion with one of the boatmen just a few weeks ago to try and see how we can bring some relief to that.
That you have, you're standing again, so I'll give you the opportunity to.
Yes, I come here to make some clarification and to emphasize the point I don't make, that you need to get the fisheries, the fishers advisory committee in place because, Mr. Minister, you could, got the best equipped boat, the fishers could got the best equipped boats. They would not be able to supply seven hundred pounds of potfish. Potfish doesn't depend on the quality of boat, on the amount of traps. I know people got like sixty traps, they pull them, they catch ten pound of fish. You go to Anguilla, you see Anguilla boats catching a lot of fish, Anguilla got a lot of shallow. You go two miles off Nevis, you in deep water, you're not catching potfish, doctor fish, Tom, Welshman and them in deep water, you catch them on shallow shelf. So that's why I tell you, you need to get fishers involved in your discussions because fishers will not be able to supply seven hundred pound of potfish because potfish don't come by quality of what you got. We not got the shelf. Nevis are shown by deep waters. Mr. Minister, Public Works, okay, like you say, we spoke several times about this road because like I said, me and Suzette be in the brunt of it. Since you're not, you cannot tell me when you're gonna fix it, I don't think it's hard for you to get couple trucks, because right now what, you see rain falling all the time? So along with the dust, they will dig out. So can you please get two or three truckload of stuff, come level it off, chuck some oil on it? That's the way you should be doing pennies, with longest a while, you chuck some oil on it to hold on the dust, that will be a help. Thank you.
That I spoke about, that was a discussion held at the highest level in marine resource from the federal level, yeah? And that was also a discussion had with counterparts here on the island of Nevis. So in terms of what was determined, it started at a thousand pounds and I can safely say that the commitment was made. Now, you would have your opinion, we cannot just sit and say it can't happen. If there are various other things that need to be done to get to that plateau, we'll have to do that. But that has been a discussion that was ongoing even prior to me and I embraced it because I do believe that the persons who have given the assurances from the highest level that it can be done have sought to buy into that initiative and we'll have to see how it goes. But as it is, you cannot just say it can't happen and leave it as that. Nothing beats a trial but a failure, as they say. I leave it as that.
Thank you very much. Go ahead.
Good evening. My first question, I want to address it to the Minister of Communications and it pertains to the water. Many of us would have noticed that in recent times, the water has a white, frothy looking and it itches the skin, it itches the skin. And sometimes, I mean, just recently I tasted it, I don't really drink it, but I had reason to, to, you know, use it in my mouth and so on. And it tastes like raw bleach, you know, raw bleach. And I want to, the question I'm asking is, how often is the water being tested and how often is it being tested? Because when I ask a particular person with the related expertise about the water, what she, what the person said to me is that the old wells, they don't, they don't go as deep as the wells that bead dog, right? And so what, what the person said to me is that because the wells that bead, the water company dog are so deep, there is a chance that minerals like lead and other, other, other stuff might be leaching into the water and minerals that might be harmful to human, human beings if they are taken in levels that are higher than what is acceptable for human consumption. So that's where my question is setting. Is the water being tested? How often is it being tested to, to ensure that we are not being poisoned by lead or any other mineral? The next issue I want to address is to the Minister of Agriculture and I want to let him know that the farmers in Nevis have been experiencing problems with entities within the Department of Agriculture. We have been having a lot of problems and I hope Mackie will support me with the importation of seeds. I mean, there are a lot of regulations being put in place about you having to take your invoice to the quarantine department. As far as I know, the quarantine department is not a revenue gathering entity. So why should I have to take my invoice there? And there are also regulations pertaining to notice when we want to bring in seeds. And let me tell you, we are facing extensive competition from entities within the Department of Agriculture. Extensive competition, we bring in stuff, we give our invoices, next thing we know, people in the department are doing the same thing. And one of the thing about all of these regulations that are red tape that are being put in place is that they are unnecessary and I hope Mr. Evelyn, as a past permanent secretary, will back me up. Because the seed companies, the seed companies in North America, they are no mean companies. This is big business in the United States and these people, their seeds are already treated, right, Miss Evelyn? They're already treated and some of their catalogs, they give you this sort of treatment. So my question, my question is, why does the Department of Agriculture wants us to, to, to give advance notice if we are bringing seeds when the department does not? The department does not have anything in place to do additional testing of the seeds to see whether or not they, they have a bacterial, whatever. There's nothing in place. So why do we have to ask for permission to bring the seeds? Now, when I asked that question, one of the things that was said to me was that people are bringing seeds from Africa and all those places. When I worked at the Department of Agriculture for eight years and I know that I cannot go abroad and take seeds from a watermelon or a poppa or some other fruit and just bring it in, the department then has the right, the quarantine division has the right to take those seeds from me. But seeds from, from reputable companies that have already been tested, I mean, I want somebody to explain that to me because I feel, and it has been borne out by the evidence, that this requirement has been set in place because entities are using farmers' information for their own use. And another thing I, I want to, a suggestion I want to make is that perhaps what is a better thing to put in place, a better method to put in place is that the department gets, you know, put a list of acceptable reputable companies in place and say, okay, farmers, you can, you can order seeds from A, B, C, D without any red tape. You can bring in your seeds because these are reputable companies. But anything out of this, outside of these companies, any other companies out of, outside of these companies, then you have to approach the Department of Agriculture for a permit. I think that probably is, would be more acceptable to us as farmers. So, Mr. Minister, I would like you to look into it, look into the fact that we are experiencing, let me tell you, a particular agricultural professional who just retired, worked in St. Kitts, told me that he was on a farmer's truck and he said the farmer was complaining bitterly for entities within the quarantine department, bitterly. So, Mr. Evelyn, you back me up because you know, for years, eight years I worked at the Department of Agriculture and we never had. And, 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 Mr. Minister, there is no legislation in place that gives the department the right to do that. I checked it out. No legislation is in place. And what it does, it is that it curtails the ability of, of the farmers to experiment. I mean, I do, I, I plant, I would, I plant, I plant arugula. I plant certain types of beans and so on. They don't come from the department. That is as a result of my personal experimentation and, 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 and the attitude to go out there and look on new varieties. And so when these regulations are put in place, it curtails our ability to bring new varieties to the, to the, to the forefront, better varieties and varieties that are, are, varieties that are sought after by hoteliers. You understand? So please, that I would like you to do something about. And as I said, a more acceptable thing to the farmers would be if you just set up a list of reputable companies and say, here you are. And those in America, right, those in North America, right, Miss Evelyn? Most of them, ninety percent of them are reputable companies. You can't even. You can't even take certain seeds from Utah to California because they have regulations in place. That is how strict they are. So, and I have seen snakes, I have seen iguana, none of them came in, in no packet of seeds. I have heard stories of entities on the Department of Agriculture over at Long Point, twelve o'clock in the, in the night, twelve o'clock in the night, um, examining a twenty foot container of plants with a flashlight, with a flashlight and I see the snakes that coming, they're incoming in no packet of seeds Mister Minister. So please, look at the, you're in St. Kitts, I got a copy of it from the Department of Agriculture in St. Kitts, look at it and please, perhaps Mister Evelyn will help us? Put something more, put something. Put something more acceptable to the farmers in place, will you please? Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your, 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 your input. I will say from the onset though that uh, the actual examination of containers and so forth goes beyond agriculture and I'll give you this example, where we have to do a better job all around, not only in agriculture and the examination of these containers. I was, I was right on sight to see a raccoon. A raccoon that made it all its way, all the way here to Nevis in a, a forty foot container of tires. How it got in there? I don't know. The person who packed the container said that he packed it, closed the door and that was it. I don't know how the raccoon got in there and got to Nevis alive. But uh, it is a concern all around and most of you have raised it in agriculture and we, we certainly will have to do a better job in that regard. In terms of, of entities, as you said, within the Department of Agriculture who are competing with farmers or taking on certain uh, uh, doing certain things within the department to, to um, interrupt the good relationship that we want to foster with our farmers. Well, those are things that we have been discussing from the ministry and department level. And I, I understand what you're saying and personally as the minister, let, let me not say personally, but as the minister responsible for agriculture, these are activities and things that I can say here publicly that I do not condone. And I would want us um, from the department and ministry level to ensure that we are doing things not in an adversarial way or to create difficulties for farmers, but we are trying to move this sector along and in so doing, we have to be able to build bridges and build relationships to ensure that we are doing that. So in terms of your difficulties with the seeds and, and so forth, the importation of your seeds, I, that has gone public. The persons who are hearing you or the persons who did not hear you tonight will hear from me because of course I would have to find out myself and dig deeper and find out what indeed are the difficulties there. We have had occasions where farmers have complained about extension officers and I'm saying publicly that our extension officers should be out there providing the technical support and the guidance to our farmers, collecting data, bringing them back to the department. The department therefore will use that data to ensure that we are doing the necessary things within the department to ensure that all farmers are producing more, not necessarily to use the data for persons within the department to build a business or to see what areas in agriculture they can go into, um, to uh, compete with our farmers. So these are challenges that have been there for many years. We have always been preaching to uh, members of the department who are interacting with farmers to do the right thing, to go out there and do what is necessary to assist the farmers and to build that capacity that we want to build in terms of ramping up production here on the island. But it's good to bring these things to the fore. I'm not so sure if I was privy to that before, but I've heard of situations where um, certain persons have been um, planting various um, crops and competing. So those are things that we'll have to grapple with and find a solution and some resolutions to them, so that our farmers are more comforted.
What is upsetting is that we do this forward information because we are being forced to, we're being forced to pass over our invoices. So it's very hard to, what we're really, where it's coming from, you understand? I mean, over, over the years, extension officers have always gone backwards, eight years in the department, but they have always gone backwards. But it was always an unacceptable level.
It can't be another acceptable level, but it also can be done in areas that the farmers are not uh, producing heavily in. For example, root crops, yams. I would love to see our extension officers go out and plant yams because the average farmer is more into the ca, the cash crops, vegetables like tomatoes, peppers and that kind of thing. So, I mean, your point is well made, Merle, and, and, and I give that commitment from, from here where I said, that is something that we'll definitely have to look into and ensure that we are on the right path when it comes to that.
The other part of your question pertains to wa, water. And I think you mentioned the water added bleach or something like that and how often we do testing. The CDB Water Enhancement Project some years ago had as part of its component, some mechanical chlorination system that was attached to it. Those system sought to ensure that the correct amount of chlorine was placed in the water at certain time. Sometimes what we found is that persons who are closest to the tanks after the chlorination would get a higher, a little slightly higher concentration of chlorination. The matter of testing, we do have a lab at the water department which we test our water very regularly. But we are also embarking on a Bureau of Standards for the island of Nevis. And what we are hoping to do with that Bureau of Standard is to ensure that we not only test water or additional testing of water, but also the private suppliers of water, uh, we also would be hoping to test food. Some of the food that comes into Nevis, uh, even locally supplied food and products and so on. So that is a project that we are embarking on and I'm really hoping that we can have this Bureau of Standard operational early in the new year. Because I believe many of us have some concerns about what is coming into Nevis, uh, water either from the government or local producers, uh, and these are certainly of great concern to us. So I share that concern. The reality is that, you spoke about Bedwell and other wells. The reality is that we have a number of wells in Nevis that I believe need to be retired. Uh, a lot of these wells have been uh, supplying water for many years and over time, I believe that the, the, their viability may be not as the best as we would like it to be. So that is why we continue to embark on water exploration and water drilling. The cabinet have given uh, its approval for some additional water drilling on the island of Nevis. You would recall that we had a second contract with Bed and we had to terminate that contract because of certain reasons and we would have already entered into some negotiation with a new driller. We have, we, we have a quotation, we have uh, the contract, we are just sorting out the, 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 the financing for that project. As soon as we sort out the financing for that project, then we hope to commence a new water drilling project on the island of Nevis. I, if it can happen tomorrow, I would like it to happen tomorrow. But um, it is a concern, like I said, the, 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 the taste or the smell that you, you miss, see in the water from time to time because of the high concentration of persons close to the, the chlorination uh, tank and so on, you may get that from time to time.
Mister Brown?
Good night to everyone and I must say that I am here to congratulate the three ministers in Nevis that recently won their seat in the federal parliament. And so my congratulations to all three of you, now the premier is not here this evening. And also I'm delighted to hear that Hanley's Road is at last getting a housing project. Very happy to hear about that. So, you know, that's good news to all ears in Hanley's Road, so when that time comes around, that will be greatly appreciated. Now, my question, I have at least about four questions, I'm gonna make them quickly. Minister Brand, Minister Evelyn and Minister Jeffers. Minister Jeffers, I start with you first. You might have to help me with another question that I was supposed to ask, the, the premier, but let me deal with your ministry. I know with Mister Moore speaking about, you know, down at Indian Castle and I think I heard that, that estate was sold to the, the, the people that wanted to build the hotel or so, I'm not certain. It hasn't been sold because I, I see one of the ministers shaking. Well, my concern is because I live down here, I live down here in this area all my life and when I look down there, I went down the road recently and to see the whole area just going to waste. And now in this COVID time when, you know, things is agriculture supposed to be on the rise, why can't we put back some of those lands that is lying in waste down there on the agriculture? Down there, this used to be a place that is being heavily, heavily used for livestock farm, farming. Why can't we, you know, raise some animals down there again so that, you know, we can have meat products to be used? Because those are things that, that, you know, that is very much needed here on the island. So I think that in the meantime, we should put back Indian Castle to good use. So I, I, I think that, that one of, of my concern. The other concern that, that I mean, that the other question that I raise, I say I'll raise it to you and then go to Minister Brand and Evelyn. That I know years ago, parliamentarian get a constituency allowance. I don't know if they still get it. If they still get it, how much do you get and what that money is being used for? Okay, that's your question. Minister Brand? Two, two, two questions to you. I know that our health center in, in Gingerland is now, you know, up at hard times. What plans is there in place to get the, the building that it once used to be in right on the main road fixed so that our health center can be right back on the main road? So that our elderly folks, when they go to the health center, which is easily and more accessible right by the main road so that they can get to the health center? Because I find that it's a little bit far up there, the bus maybe could drop them up there, but when they are finished with the health center, to get back from all the way up there to the main road, I think that, I know this is difficult time, but try our best and see what we can do to get that building renovated, whatever expansion need to be done because I heard that some expansion would be going on to get it fixed so that our health center can be right back on the main road. Our police station at Gingerland was recently done a few years ago, but I notice it seems as if it's, it's just running to ruins. Because the other day I passed there, I said it wasn't badly painted, windows are falling off, I think we need to do something with that. So those are two questions, those are two things for you to deal with. I just want to make all my points and then, oh, you want to answer right now? You finished? Okay, all right. Minister Evelyn, I, I had on my, my notes the, the grounds here, but I'm happy to hear that, you know, that is going to be fixed. Another ground here in, in the St. George's area is the ground at Zion. Well, I hear somebody said the one at, at hard times, but the one at Zion, right? Because I was over there just last night and that ground is a beautiful ground. And the reason why I brought it up, there was a building there that was once the school and that building started, oh, probably, I think in, since about in the nineties under Amri administration. Since that, the NRP administration came in, the CCM administration came in again and now another CCM administration is again and I think it's time that we do something with that building to get it so that it can be used to help to make a pavilion for that area and also so that it can be a community for the areas of Zion and Hickman's. Because as far as I know, Hickman have a little community centre, but I think that is a private building. I, I'm, I'm not recall that it's a government building, so I think that that building need, you know, to be fixed so that it can be properly used. So I, the, the question that I, I don't know if Deputy Premier could answer the question about the parliamentarian, I know that would have been to the Finance Minister, but it's a question that involves all the parliamentarian, so all of us. So, 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 I don't mean, because I know once ago and I don't know, I, I don't know if I put the honest, if a personal question, but I look at it that these questions are for the public because I understand that these funds are for the constituency and so, how much it is, if it's still there and what it is being used for. Minister Brand, I need to hear from you what will become of our health center especially.
Well, the, thank you very much for, thank you very much for those uh, very timely questions. I think I would yield the, the health center to the good Minister of Health, but I would just answer to you as it regards to the police station. I know we have been undertaking some uh, investigation or surveys of a number of police stations throughout Nevis. Gingerland Police Station was one and the Charleston Police Station was the other one. The idea is that we hope to see some renovation work on those police stations because I agree with you, they are in uh, some desperate need of some repairs. But um, I am aware that the survey was completed, I'm aware that a number of estimate was uh, also submitted and we hope that in very short order, we can have a kind of tender process where we can invite a number of contractors, maybe even yourself can bid on one of those police stations to have those renovation works done. But you're absolutely correct, there is some work that needs to be done to it and some preliminary work has already taken place to ensure that we have those renovation works ongoing. Madam Minister of Health?
I want to start by thanking the persons of Gingerland for their understanding and their patience during this time. Yes, we had to relocate the um, health center for a number of reasons. However, as we speak, there is a project that is ongoing. When it is completed, it would have been a good thing that we would have waited. There was an assessment done in terms of the, the population of the Gingerland area. The Gingerland area spans from Zion to Pond Hill, Hanley's Road to Rollins. And so there is a need for a larger facility and not only that, a facility that would take some of the weight off of Alexandra. And so an assessment has been done, a project proposal has been written for a polyclinic to be built in the Gingerland area. It is something, a step up from a health center. And so it is a work in progress, it will happen, but it will take some time. And that is why I am thanking the persons of Gingerland for their patience um, until such time that we would have been able to accomplish that. We ask, we will have to seek funding because any major um, project has to be prioritized. And as you rightly said, it is difficult times and we don't have the resources, the financial resources to do that at, at this time. So once the feasibility studies has been completed, then we will seek to have funding to do such a project. Another thing we have to take into consideration is the space, whether or not that space is, um, we have enough space allocated there or we'll have to look at alternate space to get the sort of facility that we want to put there for Gingerland. If you are nodding, are you, okay, all right.
Just, just quickly if I can answer the questions that were posed to me. Uh, one, the constituency allowance, I don't know about Minister Brand and Minister Evelyn, but I'll say at the end of each month, I am already gone past what the But I'll say, at the end of each month, I am already gone past what the constituency allowances and into my personal resources. It is normally about $2,000, I believe, $2,000. And of course, that is used for various things within your constituency and even outside of your constituency. Because persons who know you personally and you know them personally as well, they will pick up the phone and call you and then you have to dig into whatever resources you, you get. Right now, you have some graduation ceremonies that are still taking place or have just completed. Schools in our areas, various areas will call and sometimes a $500 cheque to give to a student who would have performed well in certain areas. So there, there are many things that we cover on a monthly basis with these, this, I call it mega $2,000. Because like I said, every month I'm going into my personal resources to assist persons in my constituency. So that's what the constituency allowance is all about. Now, in terms of Indian Castle, now there have been some negotiations, as we said before. Not to go back over that regarding the construction of a hotel there. But I will say, Indian Castle is still being utilized for farming. If you go across the, the gut, heading towards the quarries over there, meaning Mills and Passi Quarry. That's where we produce all of the cassava that we need to, at the agro processing unit to make flour for those composite bread that we make on a weekly basis. Plus, we have watermelon there, sweet potato as well, acres of, of sweet potato and watermelon down there. And it, you'll be amazed to see how healthy the crop look down there in a dry area. But we have significant water supply to the area. We'd have had some water development or enhancement work done down there over the last two years, I believe. So a lot of production take place down there. And we're going to continue to produce. As a matter of fact, we would have cleared, cleared some additional lands down there. We would have cleared some additional lands down there to plant more. But we don't have any livestock there now for sure because the area that was utilized before, of course, that is earmarked for, for some development. But cotton was down there when we came in. We realized people can't eat cotton, so we went into food production. And they're doing a marvelous job down there from the Department of Agriculture standpoint. So one of these days when you're touring the area, just go across towards Mills, Mills and Passi Quarry and you'll see what is going on there.
Good evening, Mackie Truss here.
Question to me, so let me just answer that question. Yeah, the, he, Mr Brown, you did pose a question regarding the New River School area. And this is a question that has come many times from persons from the Zion area as well. And the Madam Minister is here because Madam Minister could bear me out on this that for a very long time, we've had, we've had some plans for that, that building. And Madam Minister, when she was there in my ministry, she would have had some plans to do a multipurpose facility there. Since I've been there as well, this is something that we put in the budget almost every year. But as we know, Nevis, our resources are limited. And even though we put these capital projects in the budget every year, sometimes we do not have the monies to facilitate the project. And so that is something that we have been looking at over the years. Unfortunately, we haven't gotten to that yet, but it is in our workings to do.
Already drawn for that facility.
Good evening, Mackie Truss here. Merle, I, I feel your passion. Maybe back in 2010, I decided to forego my IT business and concentrate on farming. And Minister Jeffers, you're quite right, there's a lot of money in it. I've spent a couple hundred thousand dollars. And so I'm, I'm here to defend that because in agriculture, I am not sure that the throwback is coming from the department. I believe it's coming from individuals within the department. Sufficing to say that I'm using technology. So I use ground cover to get rid of my weeds. I don't know what your minister would do to get the rid of the weeds in agriculture, but you have to do something. In terms of the seeds, I farm indoors in greenhouses. Agriculture Department doesn't provide any seeds for me. I import all my seeds. There are instances when I hear other farmers say that they've got their land prepared and the seeds have been held up. Fortunately for me, that has never happened because, let me leave it like that. Now, I am very grateful that the Minister of Agriculture, Minister Jeffers, has pledged to the farmers added assistance because I think COVID has brought out the best in a lot of us. And me personally has increased my production. I could safely say that on a good week, I bring about a thousand heads of lettuce to the market. And it can only get better once the environment is, is a right one. And so I really don't want to rehash what Merle said. But there's some work, there's some weeding to be done. I take care of my weeds. So Minister Jeffers, please take care of your weeds. Thank you.
Are you not talking Ganges, all right?
Good evening, everyone. I have two, well, two comments or questions. The first, I'll direct to Minister Evelyn, a minister with responsibility for youth. So throughout this pandemic, we have really seen young people rise to the occasion in terms of their adaptability, their ability to, you know, really use technology and to really respond to, to the pandemic. A lot of other islands have integrated young people into their planning in terms of their responses to the pandemic, in terms of having young people sit on their EOCs, even having youth advisory councils in terms of how the country is going to respond to the pandemic. Now, I want to ask whether there is any platform or there's been any move to include young people in terms of a youth council or just having young people on the, on the advisory committees in terms of how we respond. So that is my first. And then my second is also to Minister Evelyn. But this is in, in this case, it is in his capacity as the Minister with Responsibility for Cooperatives. I know St Kitts right now has a very thriving Agro Strip, which is an agricultural cooperative. Right here in Gingerland, we had two thriving cooperatives in the beings of the Gingerland Public Markets and the Beekeepers Cooperative. We know that at this point, the, neither of those cooperatives are as thriving as they could be. We've also seen a lot of young people emerging with other entrepreneurial ideas, things like the Uber, things like food delivery. And these are also businesses that can be brought together as cooperatives. So my question in terms of that is what sort of plans are in place for those two cooperatives, the Public Markets in Gingerland as well as the Beekeepers Cooperative? And then also for uniting other young people in other entrepreneurial sectors under cooperatives?
Take the second question first and let me say categorically that I am responsible for cooperatives on St Kitts and not on Nevis. However, however, I could say that I, as the Minister of Cooperatives on St Kitts, I said I am very pleased with what I'm seeing in St Kitts in terms of the Agro Strip. I would have visited the Agro Strip before and I am pleased with what the cooperatives they are doing. Unfortunately, the cooperative sector here on Nevis has fallen behind. I will be giving a push to the cooperatives on St Kitts. And I'm hoping that the Minister of Cooperatives in Nevis could, we, we will, we will coordinate, we will, we will collaborate. And I would want what is happening in St Kitts to be mirrored up here in Nevis as well. Because as I said, there were some very successful cooperatives in Nevis. Unfortunately, they have fell along the wayside. And that cooperative spirit that we normally have, we would have lost somewhere along the line. And so I believe that there's a lot of scope, a lot of potential to be made there in, in cooperatives, this cooperative sector. And we see strong, relatively strong cooperatives in St Kitts. We have agro processors, we have farmers, we have several of them, we have fishermen, we have beekeepers. And so as the Minister in St Kitts, I will be doing a lot too in terms of working with the cooperative sector there and creating that push. And I believe that will transcend over here as well. And so that push that will be coming from the federal level, I believe, will come, also come to the Nevis level. With respect to young people in terms of, you asked about a youth council. I know that a youth council would have been established here in Nevis many, many years ago. I remember when I was a youth, when I was much younger, that is, I still consider myself a youth. When I was much younger, I was part of the Nevis Youth Council. I know the Nevis Youth Council was revived a couple of years ago and it went dormant again, unfortunately. I'm not sure what the issues were, why it went dormant again. But I will have to take up that with the Department of Youth. I know that it was being fed by the Department of Youth. And so I'm hoping that that is something that I will take up with the director and see where we are at in terms of a Nevis Youth Council. Because unfortunately, a lot of our young, our youth groups, they, they spring up and they do not last for any time. Both youth and community groups. And so they need to be strengthened, we need to do some capacity building within the groups. But in terms of young people and integrating young people with what we are doing in terms of even fighting with the COVID pandemic, a lot of young persons are actually involved. When I visit the EOC at Long Point, I see young persons there on site. We have young persons in the nursing profession, Madam Minister. We have young persons in other areas who are there. And so if there are young persons who have a contribution to make, I'm sure they can speak to myself or Madam Minister. And we'll have them integrated in terms of what we are doing in terms of the COVID. But in terms of the youth council, that actually is lacking and that is something that we need to look at in the future.
Thank you very much. Do we have any more questions?
Sure.
While, while the person comes to the microphone. Minister Evelyn makes it sound like cooperatives don't exist in Nevis.
I didn't say that.
Quite a number, quite a number. You have the New River Farmers Corp. Well, there's one here in, in Hanleys Road, the Indian Castle Fisherman, Fisherman Corp. Well, they're close to being a corp. And then you have the Agro, the Nevis Growers Association, you have, you have a few of them here on the island. But it needs to be strengthened.
Yes, yes.
And, and in all areas, what Minister Evelyn is alluding to is the fact that in St Kitts, you have areas in agriculture and fisheries. In all areas, you have different cooperatives that exist. And what I would want to encourage our people to do here on the island is to get yourself into these groups because only so you can access thousands of dollars that are available, not to government. Because as governments, we cannot apply to certain agencies out there. Let's say Jeff, for example, or any other funding agency that give grant funding to programs. So it must be done within a group or cooperative structure. And, and persons must be willing to put out that effort in order to, to ensure you can get significant employment out of that type of, of business or that type of cooperative, for example. You can actually grow into or morph into larger businesses as you go along. But there, there are some benefits, but our people need to be educated along those lines. And perhaps government need to do a much better job in, in providing the necessary resources that are needed in terms of helping to set up these cooperatives and to see them through along the way. But there is work to be done there, of course, yes.
Good evening. All, my question is to Mr Brand. Rice seeds, what happened to rice seeds? Rice seeds road need fixing and fix it badly. Mr Jeffers, you talk about the houses, right? The houses in rice seeds, what time that will come?
Well, as I said, we just finished paying for the land, I believe, a month or so ago. Before we enter any, any, any property or any lands, we have to have the necessary permission in terms of having the title. So I believe that you should see some clearing being done over the next month or thereabout. But before the year is done, you will see some mobilization in the area and then the subdivision will be done. And then the necessary infrastructure that is needed for us to construct will be put onto that particular piece of land. What I would encourage you or anyone listening to do is still go through the application process in the meantime. They say early bird get the first worm, so I would say get in early and put your application in so that at least when we sit down to review these applications, yours, for example, will be at the top of the, the top of the pile.
And back to you, Mr Minister. From since I not even self know when and just nagging, nagging, nagging for rice's road to do. And the road touch in ever since Mr Swanson, just two little strip and that gone now. I don't know if Eric can say how many times I nagging him, nagging him, tell him rice's road. He living there now, but I don't know what happening. I ain't see nothing happening over there.
Thank you very much for the, the question. Don't blame Eric, he has been hitting me over the head week in and week out about the number of roads in Gingerland. And so have been Minister Jeffers and even the Premier have been hitting me over my head here and there about roads in his constituency. The reality is, there is a high demand for road development and improvement all over Nevis. Just this morning, coming out of my vehicle, I met a very wonderful lady, pleasant. And she said to me, you know, in a nice, pleasant way that now that we have finished Brown Hill and, and Quadock Road, will we be coming to her area? And she said something very instructive to me, actually. She said to me that she had been waiting now for nearly 20 years. And knowing where the area is, I know that that area is what I would call a recent development, not realizing that it has been that period of time where people have been waiting in those areas for road development. The difficulty that we are facing, of course, is limited resources. And all of these ministers at the head table, including the Premier, would, would, would say to you that they have been on my case, all of them want roads done in their constituency. But the Premier have to give me the, you know, the, 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 to, um, I have a, a, a very long list of roads all over Nevis. And I would say to you that once we have access to the necessary resources, we will do as much as we can do. Rice seeds, of course, is also in the bunch.
And we will take two more questions. It's already after the 10 o'clock hour, so we have two already.
Good night, everybody, and thank you very much to the presenters for a really informative briefing. First of all, I'd like to commend Minister Brand for the water in Horatio Heights because we're right at the end of the pipeline and we're looking forward to arriving. I just hope it tastes good when it arrives. Secondly, on the question of dumping, I just, could I ask, what actually is the legal position with regard to dumping? Is there a, an established offence in law and what is the penalty? And if there is, and I mention this particularly because on Saddle Hill, where we are in Horatio Heights, and then there's the path up to Saddle Hill Fort, there's a hell of a lot of dumping going on along that road. And it's not an area where people are living, so the community can't really see what's going on. But you only have to walk up there and you see the fridges and the, and the rubbish. But you only have to walk up there, and you see the fridges and the rubbish. So at the very least, could I call for some signage? So no dumping, penalty, such and such, and maybe the occasional police patrol or even a bit of CCTV or something. But even just some signage with what the penalty actually is could be something useful. Thank you.
I have never been aware that there is a dumping site in Horatio Heights, you said?
It's not in the Heights, it's on the main road.
On the main road.
It's on the Saddle Hills.
Okay.
You go up to the radio.
Well, I have the general manager of the Nevis Solid Waste Management here, so he would have heard you, and I expect him to go and check and see how best he can clean up the area. Number one?
Number one, there is indeed legislation in place to prosecute the offenders if and when caught. In cases like that, when dumping is done in an area where nobody can see, I usually ask both entities to collaborate, and that would be the Solid Waste Management and the Environmental Health. And sometimes what they will do is to go on the site and look through the garbage and see if they can pick up any addresses or any names of persons, and then that is a starting point for us to prosecute. One of the drawbacks that we have experienced is that the legislation is federal. And so sometimes when we bring a case to courts, we are stalled in that we have to get the federal side to sign off on certain documentation. That is something that we are looking and we are dealing with to get adjusted in the not too distant future. So thank you very much for the information, and I will have the two managers of the respective areas to have a look and see how we will move forward.
Thank you very much. We had...
Mr. Hendrickson, the initiative was undertaken by your department, so I would want you to address that.
Okay, good evening, everybody. What I would like to say is that that initiative where we placed the dumpsters strategically throughout the communities, it was a COVID-19 lockdown initiative, and it was done. It was an initiative which was brought forward by the Minister, Minister Hazel Brandy Williams, and we ran that for approximately three months in a sustained way. And we didn't necessarily decide where the bins would go. Individuals called the office and they made requests, and we responded in the best way that we could. But we could only run the initiative for so long. There are costs associated with it. And so the Nevis Solid Waste Management Authority was forced to put a pause on it, and we are trying to catch our strength, and we'll be back. What I would like you to do is to make a note of our telephone number, which is 4691762. Also, there are social workers who are in charge of each district, and we were running the program in close collaboration with them, and they were the ones who were saying where they were supposed to go. I even got several phone calls from Minister Evelyn where individuals approached him and expressed their individual needs, and we responded by placing the bins. Keep your ears out, we'll be back very shortly.
Thank you very much for that, and we'll now take our final question. We... And that, I'm certain that the government will assist. Okay? We'll take our final question.
I just, I... I want to make a suggestion to Minister Jeffers about agricultural production on Nevis. And let me say that I've been to an agricultural food fair in St. Kitts, and I have seen them with the produce, and there's a label that says levels of chemical acceptable for human consumption. So I am suggesting that something like that could be put in place in Nevis, because we have a lot of entities who are involved in agricultural production in Nevis, and the practices are questionable. I want to think that Donald Daniel maybe might have approached you about that before, because all of us share concerns as to people, certain entities who are involved in agricultural production and the practices that they use that are harmful to the human body, okay? Now, Minister Health, one of the suggestions I would like to make is that maybe the health centers could be better utilized, because in former times, we could have gone to the health center and get a sebaceous gland dealt with and minor stuff. Now, when we go, they're telling us, you have to see a doctor. These nurses are well-trained nurses, and perhaps that would sort of kind of alleviate some of the pressure at the hospital, get them back into dealing with certain things. I mean, when our nurses leave here and go to the United States, they are highly paid because it is felt that they are well-trained down here, so I don't see why the simple things, we have to keep going to a doctor, go to a doctor. That's what we have been told, because they have been told that they should send us to doctors. And another thing is, I have long felt that governments in the region have a disinclination for our diaspora abroad to come back home. I have long felt that, and I would like this administration to prove me wrong. Because every time you ask our people abroad, are you coming back home? They say, yes, we would like to, but the health system is not that good, and we have to go back for medical attention. Now, some years ago, a national of Nevis, who, she is no, I mean, Eric knows her, Valjean Chapman, she is no, she is a bigwig in the pharmaceutical industry in Canada, and she offered the government, the CCM government, the opportunity to help them. She used to send drugs for the hospital. She offered the, she said she can help them with medical equipment, nurses without borders, doctors without borders, efficacious drugs, because at the time, the company that she worked for manufactured drugs, and the government made no move to accept the assistance. Now, as I said, I want this administration to prove me wrong in thinking that you guys are a part of not wanting our diaspora to come home, because probably they will present, we will have a middle class who will give the government problems, because their pensions and all that is not attached to anything or any entity that is grounded here in Nevis. So prove me wrong. I can give you her address if you want to touch base with her. She wants to come back home, but then it's the medical situation. So that is something I hope that you will look into. Thank you.
We will take one more question.
Hi, good evening to everyone who is here and those who are also listening. My name is Bjorn Hanley, and for those of you who do not know who I am, I was the NRP candidate for the last federal elections representing this constituency. And I'm very pleased with the amount of questions that were asked tonight, because a lot of the questions covered the plans and programs that I would have spoken about during the campaign. For example, there are a number of facilities in Gingerland that are closed at this time. Old Manor, the Gingerland Library, the Gingerland Public Market, the Gingerland Health Center, the Police Station House, right next to the Police Station, which is owned by the NIA. Horse Racing is closed, Zetlands, so all these facilities are closed. And I made a recommendation, my plan was to rebuild all of these facilities and create some quick jobs. And also the roads in Gingerland, I would have mentioned during the campaign, the River Path Road is in a state of disrepair, Taylor's Pasture Road, Mainers Ground Road, Boxill Road, all of these roads are in urgent need of repair. And I also mentioned, I had a program to partner with local fishermen and local farmers and help them to build a fishing industry in Gingerland, Indian Castle. We could have fishing down there at Indian Castle and livestock farming. All the residents of Gingerland need is for the government to partner with local entrepreneurs and help them. And also, Mr. Evelyn, so my question is, when are we going to get all those projects started? The Gingerland Library, the Public Market, the Health Center, Old Manor up and running? And also, Mr...
Let me just cut you off. Old Manor does not belong to the government, sir. Old Manor is private.
But it's for sale. Old Manor is for sale, and surely, under the Citizen by Investment project, we could purchase that property. And also, Minister Evelyn, I took note that you mentioned with the cooperatives question...
One question.
The last one. The cooperative question that you mentioned, you highlighted the fact that you would be working in St. Kitts, you'll be helping to build the cooperatives in St. Kitts, not Nevis. But you are the elected federal minister for St. Kitts and Nevis.
I also said that I will be, I also said that I'll be working in collaboration with the Cooperatives Minister in Nevis. You need to listen, Mr. Hanley, before you speak.
But it was too much about St. Kitts.
I did say that. I said that I'm responsible for cooperatives in St. Kitts.
I'm trying to...
Minister Jeffers is responsible for cooperatives in Nevis, and we will work together.
That is true, but...
I made it absolutely clear.
And I took note that you didn't say anything that you were going to do in Gingerland, any plans, any programs, you didn't say anything that you were going to do.
Mr. Hanley, you asked about the Health Center. Madam Minister already addressed that. You spoke about Old Manor. Old Manor does not belong to the government. You've been talking about the Public Market. You talk about Zetlands. Zetlands does not belong to the government. Zetlands is private. Something came up about the Police Station that was already addressed. As I said, the roads have been addressed by Minister Brand several times, and the Public Market actually is something that I had in my 10-point plan when I ran in 2017, right? And I have said over and over again, once the funding becomes available, we will fix the Public Market.
Well, thank you for that, Minister Evelyn.
Satisfactory. We did say one question in the interest of time.
Do enjoy the rest of your night.
It is now 10:30. I want to... I would like to thank everybody for coming out this evening, and... Okay. I'd like to thank everybody for coming out this evening. We certainly had a wonderful time together, and we look forward to when we start our next series of town hall meetings. I hope to see the same type of enthusiasm. For the benefit of those watching via NTV, listening via Von Radio, we want to thank you for your support, and I would like to invite everybody out to the convention of the Concerned Citizens Movement this coming Sunday afternoon at 4:00 p.m. It will be at the Nevis Performing Arts Center. Thank you very much for joining us. Do have a wonderful night.